Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to City Council Meeting. Tonight is Monday, November tenth. Audrey, can you have the record show that our city attorney, city planner, city engineer, along with all council members, our assistant city administrator and our city administrator are all present this evening? This time I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is our open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, stay tuned, get an address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Paul Nevada and state representative for the east half of Otsego, Elk River now then, and the west half of Elk Grove. And just thought I'd stop in tonight, touch base with you, just to remind you that this short session that we have in 2026, it will not start until February seventeenth, which is almost six weeks short of what would have been the regular session in 2025. So it'll be very short. If there is any legislative work that you want done as a council, that will have to be submitted to me or Representative Hudson fairly quickly, because we cannot wait until session starts. There will only be, depending on the committee date, probably eight committees meeting. So, and if you want something done, we'll have to have it on the agenda and have it ready at the start of sessions. With that being said, we have no money. Rough estimates are this state right now is about ninety is in the red. The biggest leading cause of that is we're losing money on corporate income tax. And we've lost some money. The second driver of revenue is sales tax. That's down. I anticipate that the report, which should have been out today, that usually comes out on the tenth, but the revenue report, I suspect for October, will be terrible. The biggest driver of of sales is discretionary buying. And there's a whole lot of people that have not had paychecks for the last month. And I would suspect that that would affect their discretionary buying. So things are not going well in that standpoint. And the corporate income tax, so that was hundred and seventy-three million over the year. We'll see what the next report says. Like I said, they should be out tomorrow with the revenue reports. But if you want to do something as a city, this would be a good time for policy things. There's no money. So.
So, um, do we have a sense of with corporation, the corporate tax laws? And that's from corporations leaving? Is that correct or what's causing that?
I don't, I did not get a specific thing. I know that July it was like twenty million, twenty million dollars short. September, it was twenty-three million dollars short. And then I would have to pull up my notes again, but well over a hundred million dollars short for September. I don't know. That's not a gradual decline. That's a fall off the cliff. You know, we see some of the corporate, you know, Target just announced they're pulling eight hundred of their mid-level jobs. Most of those people will be paid through the year. But, you know, so that's not going to be reflected. I don't know when the corporate income taxes to have that much of a shortfall. And it wasn't included in the, in the report. With the paid family medical leave, anybody that can is outsourcing to get out from underneath that.
Yeah. Other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're still under open forum. Any other comments? Since no one else is in the audience, we will close the open forum and move on to consider our agenda for approval. Anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
That's right.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
That's right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to our planning, our four point one is our comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. I will turn this over to the planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city initiated some amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations addressing the service staging, transportation plans, and some provisions in the zoning ordinance related to rural subdivisions. This was basically kind of housekeeping issues that have come up over time. And as new developments have come forward, some changes were necessary. The urban service staging plan, this basically outlines where sewer services to be provided and then expanded to. The area south of I ninety-four, in the very southwest corner of Otsego, includes approximately a hundred and sixty acres. That's fairly chopped up in terms, already having been subdivided into rural parcels. There's also extensive topography and wetlands in that area, which makes it highly unlikely that that area would ever receive sewer service based on the city's current policy. It's currently designated as part of the sewer district, but to property owners in that area, some opportunity to potentially subdivide their property using septic and well on site. The recommendation is to change that to long-range urban service area. Basically, the acreage lots in the northeast corner of the city to be covered under those same policies. Transportation plan, when the Amber Meadows development was considered last year, there was work done on what McAllister Avenue should look like as a minor collector street connecting between Seventieth Street and Future Nashville. The design that was put forward as part of that project was a thirty-six foot wide section of street with a larger boulevard and a trail on one side. Looking at that design, staff felt it would be worth amending the transportation plan section all the way through between Nashville Avenue and Seventieth Street. And then also for the segment of the minor collector street that would extend north off of that towards Eighty-Fifth Street using Mason Avenue. With that, we also adjusted the alignment to put it plans on the north side of the wetland so that it basically becomes more of a parkway street without houses on both sides. You basically have the wetland and natural area as a scenic amenity on the south side of it. It also maximizes the potential traffic utilizing that route. Change with this is it kind of resolves what that intersection, at least in schematic form, looks like at Nashville Avenue where Seventy-seventh Street actually intersects it. With respect to the interim land use plan, this is the policy that says water utilities are available, development density is limited to one unit per ten acres. The current practice has been to require that any subdivision consists of lots between one acre and two and a half acres in size, with the balance of the property then held as a large tract for future development. The planning commission looked at a subdivision request to the west of Riverwood National on Cattler Avenue that was basically taking a twenty-acre property and splitting it into ten-acre properties. The planning commission said, you know, if we're this far out from where sewer immediately available, and you're still realizing a ten-acre parcel that could be acquired and re-subdivided in the future, maybe we should have some opportunity for that. So the direction that was brought forward was to establish a second allowance within that urban service expansion area. Ten-acre lots, three hundred and fifty or three hundred feet in width within the areas highlighted in orange. So those aren't the immediate areas where sewers likely to be available, but probably ten or more years out from now. They still have the opportunity to do the clustered lots. And then the same provisions related to deed restrictions, et cetera, limiting any future development until sewer and water utilities are available. Then, as we were kind of looking at this section, looking at how we have processed these with, it's a conditional use permit and then a straight of subdivision. The administrative subdivision provisions in the ordinance were somewhat out of date. I don't think they'd been touched since nineteen ninety-one when they were adopted. So we basically cleaned up those processes and made them more consistent with our current practices, as well as we're more about information that needs to be submitted so that it would expedite the process, both for the applicant and for city staff. So the planning commission initially discussed this in July and provided direction to city staff to proceed with the amendments that we've outlined. They held a public hearing and they did recommend approval unanimously. City staff also recommends approval. These changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan, goals and policies. Above all, what we're doing here is making increased opportunities for property owners to have interim land uses between now and when ultimately be available. We're also making the process of subdividing those properties easier for both the property owners as well as staff. One note there on the bottom of the application, the motion and the request for council action doesn't include publication in summary form, like to do so that we can save costs publishing all these words.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think, so the only, I'll narrow down my comments to really just the administrative subdivision portion. For me, like, so an administrative approval means that there's a potential for an admin. And I looked today, I couldn't find any appeal process within Title ten, which is the subdivision ordinance. There is some in Title eleven, but it would say, this ordinance wouldn't apply to that. So a Title ten denial, administrative have no appeal process. And the proposed ordinance doesn't have one. So that, so requests that would not qualify for this administrative subdivision would go through the normal path where they have public hearings. They have a right to be heard by the council. But if it qualifies division, it would have to go through this administrative process. And then a denial would end the process. So I would like to see some sort of appeal process built into this, either for Title ten as a whole or for administrative subdivisions.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We can certainly add one to the administrative subdivision section. As council member said, basically if staff were to deny the request, and the only reason we could deny a request would be is it doesn't comply with the subdivision ordinance or the zoning ordinance. It's subdivisions aren't a real policy issue. They're all just technical. Does this meet requirements or not? But I think it would be helpful probably to have an appeal language in that section of the ordinance as well. So we can either have the council pass the ordinance as written and table that section and add it to your next meeting.
I would agree with Ryan's comments. I mean, if the goals on your last page were that we want this to be easier for residents and it gives them more freedom, but we're giving them that denied, there is no option for them to come back.
Mayor, I can say, I don't think we've ever denied an administrative application. But it's always good to have the language in the ordinance, so.
Right, especially since the plan was to clean this up and make it more user-friendly for them. So they understand the process.
So the options are to make a motion to adopt it as written and come back and revisit and revise it again.
Essentially, we just add another ordinance than an appeal section.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay. All right. All right. I'd like to make motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash sixty, mending the comprehensive plan and adoption ordinance twenty-five dash ten, mending the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance presented. Second.
Madam Mayor? I'll just amend. So that, so that we can publish in summary form.
Oh, per the request on the page. That was not included here. It was on the screen. She was looking at the screen. Yes. Yep. Very willing to. Okay, so. I need a second. I did. Tina seconded it. So let me back up. Okay, Dan, can you go back? Yes. You. I saw she was looking down and not looking at your screen and right. My apologies. Technical difficulties.
There we go. All right. So let's try this again. Taking a motion to adopt a resolution twenty-two-five dash sixty, mending the comprehensive plan and adopting ordinance twenty-two-five dash ten, mending ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And amend the motion to include publication in summary form. Second. There we go.
Thank you. We have a motion by Michelle, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? Some favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Better.
All right. Moving on to city council reports and updates, does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor?
That's great.
I'm just gonna, that OHPC put on cemetery tour on October thirtieth, and I think it was a big hit. I don't know about how many people we had, but there was a bunch of people out there and they were excited.
Yeah, it was a really good turnout. People, I think, showed up.
It had to be, yeah. And they, there was a couple of people wanting to join OHPC for next year, so.
They did a really good job, so if you could pass it along to them, I thought that they did a great job breaking up groups, telling the history and taking feedback for like what we might want to see next year. So kudos to them for doing that. I thought they did great.
Yeah, and I think they, they provided some of their own cider and stuff. So that was really cool. We'll be meeting on Wednesday evening.
Wednesday, tomorrow.
We have Veterans Day tomorrow.
Oh. No, it's pushing.
Yeah.
You can come tomorrow, but no one will be here. I'll show up.
Better than that, that's all I have.
All right. Same with tomorrow's, we're at City Health Post and so public safety is on Wednesday.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A less fun topic, I think, but talked about it, the last council meeting, the end of the year is quickly approaching. We only have two regular meetings left to deal with the elephant in the room, and that is the planned cancellation of the contracts with Elk River and Rogers. Our current plan calls for our city to go it alone on January first of twenty-seven. And it should be obvious to everyone at this point that the plan is not going to work. A single standalone station is inefficient and undermines our responsibility to provide public safety and protect our residents. Going from seven stations down to one does not improve safety. Charging residents three times for one-third of the service does not improve their financial situation. Rather than cancel the contracts and leave our citizens without fire service, I think it's time for this council to take accountability and reverse course. The decision to cancel the contracts is made without council approval, and we need that immediately. We need to send a letter to the cities of Elk River and Rogers, letting them know that we will not be canceling fire service for our residents. This letter is needed in order to make our intentions clear and to begin to repair the damage that has been done to our relationships. That this council direct staff to prepare such a letter and bring it back to the council at the next regular meeting for consideration. This is a formal motion, so I'll need a second.
We have a motion. Is there a second to it? Motion fails due to a second. Adam, I have some comments on that or some questions to you on that. We've, I assume, also has met with Chief Scott. And but he's also met with all of these fire chiefs and they're still, this is work, they're working towards different things. So do you have any updates that you can share?
Mayor, you hit the point on the head that he's continuing to meet with the chiefs in the neighboring cities. As far as the contract termination language, to my knowledge, that hasn't been approved by the city council or sent by city staff to any of the three neighboring cities at this point, so. Until council would authorize staff to send that letter, I would not have sent that, so. Unless, unless you know something that I do, council member.
So a couple of things I would say on that. If, if that's the case, that we are not intending on canceling the contracts, then I just gave us an opportunity to make that abundantly clear to our neighbors. And I couldn't get a second. I will say is if you go onto the city website right now and look under the FAQ for our fire department, under FAQ number two, it says that our cost estimates are based on ending the contracts. FAQ number four is even more specific. It's going to be recapturing state aid. We can only recapture state aid if we cancel the contracts. The website also claims that we will be having our operating costs will be in lieu of the contract cost, meaning we are canceling the contracts. It's also, we told Albertville in October of twenty-twenty-four that our intent is to provide service without supplemental service contracts. They memorialize that in their November eleventh, twenty-twenty-four council meeting minutes. It was also stated in the May fourth council meeting earlier this year, where they were summarizing and meeting with us, they stated that our intent is to provide service to all of Otsego without any contracted service. The projected annual operating budget for twenty-twenty-seven that was presented during the joint Public Safety Commission meeting of last year includes cost estimates which exclude the contracts. The same figures were also presented to the council during our meeting on March twenty-fifth of last year. Those figures increased, but they still included a deduction for the full contracts as of the staffing study that was earlier this year. So our intent and the public information that is out there is that we are canceling the contracts. Again, I think we need to make it clear to Elk River and Rogers, we are not going to cancel the contracts. We only have a few weeks left to do so.
The agreement with the city of Elk River outlines that this agreement may be terminated at any time during its term. The parties serving a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day written notice of termination to the other party. This agreement shall terminate three-hundred-and-sixty-five days from the date of written notice of termination, unless the party serving the notice specifies a later date of termination or withdrawal in writing before it is effective. That is the language in the contract. That notice has not been approved by the city council or been sent by city staff.
And the conversations that Mike Golds has been having with them is that he is continuing to evaluate exactly what this looks like since we have not seen our staffing plan moving forward, correct?
Mayor, I have not been a party to those meetings, but all indications are that he's continuing open conversations, which each of the cities.
Well, Madam Mayor, I guess with that, we have an interesting conundrum. Because if we don't cancel the contracts before the end of the year, and they are allowed to continue, which is what I would be in support of, then we have a January first, twenty-twenty-seven death that can't happen, because we will have two contracts in place. Further, we would need to re-initiate a contract with Albertville before that time. Because Albertville's contract does have an end date. So that's why I'm bringing this up now, because we only have to, at the end of the year, we're gonna have to make a decision one way or the other.
Any comment? Adam on that?
I, I read you the contract language. It allows a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day notice. It also allows for prior to that notice of termination. So do you have to provide a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day notice of your intent? You do. Is it binding? How?
So Ryan, are you assuming that when we do submit in a letter in the future to these individuals, that if we don't make it by the end of the year, you're assuming that we're gonna be paying for a full year of contract with them to bridge the gap? Or I'm just trying to get on the same page with where your head is at and understand kind of, because it doesn't seem like it reads that way. We're obligated for a full year of contract without sending out a notification that we're canceling. Sounds like it's three sixty, three hundred and sixty-five days from that notice.
I would agree with that. That's what's, so if our intent and the plan is still to go live, go it alone on January first of twenty-twenty-seven, that's what I'm saying. We only have two meetings left to make that decision.
And I assume you met with Chief Scott?
I did.
Okay. And I can share with my meeting, we talked about it might be, have to look a little different with those, the going live looks like on January first, twenty-twenty. He was still evaluating and gathering information on that. I don't know what your conversation included.
I would say my conversation was similar. So with that in mind, we still have to evaluate what this plan actually looks like. I think the current plan of going it alone, January first of twenty-twenty-seven, isn't going to work. And until we can have a better understanding of what our fire service needs to look like in the city, I don't think we should allow the implication to be out there that we are going to cancel contracts. That's why I offered, I, I think the best thing we could do in order to repair the relationships and make this abundantly clear is to send a letter to Elk River and to Rogers and let them know, we are not going to cancel the contract, because we are still working through what
But those conversations have ended already, per my conversation with Chief Scott.
I think, I think it would be much better if it came from us. I don't think we need a scapegoat to take the heat for the failures of this council.
Madam Mayor?
That's great.
Um, I would confer my conversations with the chief are similar to what I'm hearing from you. That he's working diligently to repair relationships and sounded like, well, with all three chiefs.
Madam Mayor, I'm just confused then. If, if the intent of this council is to not cancel the contracts, and we've all had these conversations that are indicating that we do more work to not only fix the relationships, but also to assess and get that independent third-party assessment of what our fire service should look like, then what, then to me, the only logical conclusion would be, we should we should let the other cities know, we're changing course.
And I don't think changing course is the right word, but I guess, I assume Adams had these conversations with the city administrators in those cities also.
And do.
I would just say, Madam Mayor, that, that is a mistake I think this council has made in the past, is we need to take responsibility. We, those decisions fall on our shoulders. And it's okay that we have people that we bring in, experts, and there is administrative process. But ultimately, it falls on our shoulders. And that's where I think we should take responsibility in this case and make sure our intentions as a council are clear.
That we're working through challenges and trying to determine things. So I don't think a ladder, a letter, I think we need to be careful on our wording to not lock us into over-obligating ourselves, like we're gonna switch gears completely. But a letter letting them know that we are appreciating their involvement with our community and appreciating the fact that they're willing to work with us as we figure out kind of what that game plan truly looks like. I, I think that's fine. I think we do need to be careful on our wording so we don't lock ourselves into something.
Other comments?
Madam Mayor, I think what's been going on with Mike, from what I'm gathering, is he's been having these face-to-face conversations with the cities. And I think that's what's needed here. Yeah, because I mean, in this day and age of email and social media, and there's a lot of conversations face-to-face not happening. And, and from what I've gathered from him so far, he's having all of those. I think that's the best route here. And we also approve. Um, we also approved. The group that he's with to help assess this and we just have not received that back yet, but. Sounds of it, it's it's favorable.
And I would concur with speaking to Mike. That he is working, he has, he has done a lot on the relationships since Darrell's left. He's pretty much done a three sixty, but I think if you want. To Ryan, because this is what I've done, if you want to go and meet with the city administrator of each city. Or whomever and do an apology face to face, that's what I think we should do, um I've done that with Albertville. I think that's the least that we could do, not a letter, a letter is not gonna, a letter means nothing. It needs to be, it needs to come from us. So I think all of us should go and meet with the city administrators from the cities that we work currently. And continue to work with and do an apology to them face to face. That's where you're gonna get most bang for your buck, not a letter.
Madam Mayor, I would just say that it. I see nothing wrong with doing both, the reason that a letter has some weight to it is that it comes from all of us. If if we're just going and shaking hands with the other council members and apologizing on behalf of our city. Or on behalf of our council, the problem is coming from all of us, we are individually one of five. And I think I. Agree with the statements that were made by the speaker previous, going to each of these uh cities and shaking hands and apologizing is a good step. I just think a letter come of us on a five to zero vote would go a long way.
But what, I guess, what is your letter? What's the meat to the letter? Explain to me what you want that letter to say.
I I I would be perfectly happy with staff coming up with something, but in my mind.
Then you're saying you want it to come from the, and now you're just saying you want it to come from staff.
Because we would have to approve the letter is what I'm saying, but in my mind, it would just say we are not canceling the contracts, thank you for your service. We are continuing to work through what our service looks like. Uh, we'll let you know more when we can, uh, you know, to me, the the info. In the public right now is that we are going live January first and with therefore we are canceling the contracts, I think we need to correct that.
Well, it starts with that we need to have correct information on our own city website. Does everyone agree with that? And it's my understanding that um Chief Scott said he was working through some items out there for social media, he had already talked about. Um, his information that was going out in uh Otsego view. Those should probably match those information.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I I'll just add, uh, he's been going through and reviewing the website, but obviously with limited time, we're. Tend to be. Behind on some of that stuff, so if there's things, please send it to staff, we can make sure it gets updated. Sometimes we just miss it when we spend all, you know, a lot of time looking at the materials, it tends to just blend together for us too, so. If there's other ones, please let us know, we're happy at staff to update things as well.
Ryan, if you could send that information. I I'm not. I I'm just, I I'm very thankful for all those partners that we listed and I just, I'm not sure if just sending a letter makes it better. And so that I'm not disagreeing with it, agreeing with it, um, I'm like Tina, I. Talk to Mayor Deets all the time, so I I would say if there's. He's maybe not as aware of the situations as the chiefs are because the chiefs are the ones that are working through this process together. I I guess I'm looking to, as Adam said, pending. You have meetings set up with those other city administrators or fire chiefs or how is, what's what's that look like?
Mayor, council meetings have been requested and not set up yet.
Okay, with the other.
Correct.
I think if our sentiment is that we all agree that something needs to be said, when the meeting happens, wouldn't it make more sense for Adam to say? The full council is in support of. Bombing us time to work through this and we're thankful, I mean, so it's saying the same thing that you're saying, Ryan.
Uh, are we, uh, I mean, that's, if if we can all agree to that right now, that we that. That we are not going to have a vote before the end of the year to cancel the contracts, then let's get that out there. Let's make sure the other cities are aware of that.
Mayor, council, what's your decision, not mine?
Can we have information, I mean, I, we've all. Chief Scott, but is there information that could be provided to us in the next, at our next city council meeting from him, just. I know that's hard to give him a deadline of two weeks, but. Or an update, something that we could have as an update.
Mayor, I I don't think that would be fair to be able to have any sort of concrete answer or direction. After this amount of time in order to give you a recommendation to either cancel or not cancel anything. So I I just don't think that's a fair spot to put him in at this point, so.
Which are to say, to Ryan's point, saying that. We're putting out a letter saying that we are going to need you when we don't have the information if we do or don't. And it's, and I'm not saying that what that looks like is the same as what it looks like now, it could be a combination or something that looks different.
I have a meeting with Mike, um, walking through the um construction site on Wednesday. To talk to him about, you know, the ideas of sending some sort of letter. To the um other city councils, maybe brought beyond that. And see what his opinion is and kind of touch base with him and kind of get a sense on. You know, if he were to word something just to extend the appreciation and and extending. Um, their their work through and be nimble and work through um um us. Going through the process of figuring out what we need, um, and being careful about our wording, I think that would be. Helpful, you might be able to contribute a little bit, but I'll talk to him about it, so what is.
Are we okay waiting two weeks to come back with information on that? Ryan?
I would prefer to send a letter now, but I'm, again, just one vote.
I I would like to talk with Mike a little bit more and I would also.
Mayor, council, if if there was intending to be discussion about fire and having. Conversations with Chief Scott, it would have been nice to have Chief Scott in the room to have those conversations. Working through individual meetings and discussions with him, if you want to have a meeting about fire services and the planning. I don't think it's fair to ask for a final recommendation, if you want updates, I think it would be more useful to schedule a meeting to talk about the topic. You are all talking about up here with the person most relevant to that conversation, not in the room.
That is fair.
Is it possible to add a conversation to something that we already have scheduled, the time that we already have scheduled coming up?
Mayor, council, the next special meeting is on November twenty fourth at five thirty P M.
So to Michelle's point, could we add that discussion with him there?
You certainly can, I would ask for. Specific things that you want to see and presented to you at that meeting, or if this is just a conversation. I I don't want to have him not know what to present to you or what you're going to be asking him at the meeting. You need to have it be a productive process and have a structured discussion and not just a meeting to have a meeting, so.
I guess that's my biggest is. Uh, I am, I appreciate that we have an interim person to handle some of these issues. But ultimately, this is a council decision and a council needs to take responsibility. I am ready to say we are not canceling the contracts, I understand why my, the rest of my colleagues are not. Uh, at at the very least, it seems to me clear from the discussion that's happened that. We all understand that there needs to be more assessment of the plan. And so canceling the contracts in that involves seems reckless to me.
I I don't think any of us are saying we're canceling the contracts, Ryan, so.
Which brings me back to my original point.
I don't think we're prepared to respond one way or the other on are we canceling or not canceling.
Or or do those look different?
Two weeks, I, we need a little more time to. And a letter stating that we appreciate them working through this with us during this time of discovery and. Um, carving out the best plan and working with us while we're working through this process, we greatly appreciate, I think that's a good letter to send. I I don't think adding in there that we're canceling anything, that's not what I would want because we don't know. We don't know when we're canceling, we don't know when we're.
Or if it's changing or if it looks different.
Or if we're pushing it back, pulling it forward, I, you know, I pulling it forward, but um. We don't have enough information to become detailed, we can extend out an appreciation for their involvement. And working with us during this time.
Madam Mayor, we have two meetings to figure it out. That's where I keep going back to, I, to me, if if there is. Some concern, if there is some idea that maybe we don't know what comes next. Then the next logical thing to do would be to correct the fact that it is out. Be going live on January first, twenty twenty seven, canceling the contracts. In the next two weeks, in the next two, before the next, before the end of the year, because they have a three hundred and sixty five day cancellation requirement.
One contract has a three hundred and sixty five day notice.
The Rogers one has a similar, has similar language.
Rogers is September first of any year.
I thought that was the Albertville one.
Albertville has no notice language because it is a contract that ends on December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
So.
The Rog Rogers language reads, this contract replaces any existing contracts and agreements, so on, so on, so on. And shall remain enforced from January through December thirty first and. From year thereafter unless on or before September first of any year, either party gives notice to the other party of intention to amend. Or terminate this contract, so. Prior to the end of the year, you have one letter that you have to send contractually to say that you may or may not. The contract, it also allows for that to be revoked at any day before that termination date, so. Yes, you do have to send a letter to the city of Elk River with three hundred and sixty five day notice. That doesn't mean it has to be before December thirty first. It has, just means it's three hundred and sixty five days before you intend to potentially terminate that contract.
So we're, we've already missed the deadline on the Rogers one, if I'm hearing your.
It's September first of any year, so September first would be in a six.
Right, but then that would be three hundred and sixty five days from that.
No.
There is, there is no notice of three hundred and sixty five days on Rogers contract, so it's prior to September first.
For January through December.
Mayor. On the agenda for discussion tonight, staff is not prepared to. Address any of this, council reports and updates are time for individual council members to make whatever reports and updates that they need to, but. The agenda was not amended to include this as a discussion item. To have staff come back with. Analysis of the various contracts or proposed language for a letter or anything else, I would suggest you direct staff to put that on an agenda and then you could have a discussion, but. I don't think anyone's prepared to discuss this tonight because it was not, and it was not added to the agenda when the agenda was approved.
Thank you. All right. For this discussion this evening, do we want to? Ryan, would it be helpful for you to have them put together when the dates are? For the other contracts, since it seems like there's been some confusion on the language of when that needs to be made?
I don't need that, because I'm not in favor of canceling the contracts, so I'm.
Okay. So specifically a letter to Rogers would not need to happen if. Per Dave and Adam's comment. I I guess I would. I mean, I'm I'm taking Chief Scott's word that he's been having these conversations and that he's been thanking them for their continued. Service with us and also what that looks like moving forward. That has not been all figured, been figured out yet, so I'm. We've all publicly said we're very thankful for our three service providers and. Given the change. What our staffing looks like, we've had to. Reevaluate where we're at. And so I think to have an answer tonight seems very premature and also. Um, sending a look when, does that add a little bit, does that have another layer of confusion for? For those cities, um, I guess I'm, I'm not sure that does or does not. Those are my comments, does anyone else have anything on that?
Madam Mayor, I think maybe what might be helpful and maybe the next. Couple of weeks here is um, if we could receive some sort of a timetable or outline of. Maybe where the chief thinks things are at or they're gonna be at. I don't know what everybody thinks about that.
I think that would be fair and it's not to say this is the window, but but setting something up to give us some. Concrete feedback on what we may know or idea would be helpful.
Madam Mayor, my opinion on that is that. And I said this to him when I spoke to him, I don't think it's fair to put all of that on an. Fire administrator's shoulders, I think. When our fire chief resigned, some of the responsibility of that needs to fall on the council's shoulders. We need to figure out what we want as a council. And then we should be directing our interim fire minister to carry out those orders, I do not think it's fair. To put all that pressure on him to have him fix what we have done. I don't think he has enough time to do that, I don't think that's what. Anyone wants to do. I, he's fully qualified, trying to step on his toes, that's why I'm trying to say the council needs to make some decisions here. And I don't need the information from Mr. Scott, to me. He's on path, he's, he's repairing some of our relationships and those. To me, the council needs to take some responsibility.
So what responsibility are you expecting for us to to take? At this point in time, we've, we've engaged an expert who is, also has um other experts that are supporting. What we're doing, looking at and what we're looking at modifying where we're at today. What, what decisions, what things do we need to do at this point in time? When we don't have enough information to really feed into those decisions.
That question, what has changed? January first, twenty twenty seven, no, no longer seems likely to me, it doesn't seem like a possibility. And that's why I offered what I did tonight.
I disagree with you.
You're in favor of. Canceling the contracts then and going alone on January first of twenty twenty seven?
Today, I don't have enough information to respond that way.
That is the current plan.
Ryan, and and we all know that with the change in staffing and we have met with the chief that. It may look different, we do not have the information. It sounds as though we all were told something very similar to that and what that may look like. So, and I would agree with Dave's comment to expect staff to. Respond and us council members to respond and have a. Healthy conversation here, it it's, it's being thrown at us to say, send a letter. We're not canceling contracts, okay, well, we don't know what exactly that looks like, are the contracts gonna be the same? I don't know that answer right now, you don't know that answer right now.
It's an assumption.
I brought it up at the last council meeting, so I would expect that my colleagues would at least. Line that we are faced with.
We're not an emergency situation for the end of the year, we do need to send something and we do need to have a game plan. We're not an emergency situation for the end of the year. We do need to send something and we do need to have a game plan. We need to have something on the agenda for probably the next council to take this further. But what.
But in regards to letter, it's Elk River would be the only one. Correct?
Mayor, yes.
All right, staff, I will, if you guys could look this over with some information back to the full council. Appreciate that. Everybody okay with that? All right, we are still under council reports and updates. Does anyone else have anything? We will move on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just as a reminder, as was discussed earlier, city offices are closed tomorrow for Veterans Day.
Okay, thank you. Adam.
Mayor Council, uh, that. Uh, extended invitations to all of you, if you would like to meet him at the fire station site to tour construction progress, so. Uh, please contact him if you would like to do that. No further updates.
Thank you. Adra.
Thank you, Mayor. Updates.
No updates, thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, no further updates.
Ron? This week? Yeah, today's the tenth.
I just walked in by and it looks awesome.
Sergeant Altman's.
I can tell you, I am looking forward to the end of construction season. My squad, Shocks and the Struts will very much appreciate being on railroads and not going through detour zones, so. Uh, a couple of things that are on my list, um, in in no particular order, although they kind of have a segue to one another. Our uh, social media team at the sheriff's office, one, really trying to do a bigger push to have a little bit more interaction and have a little bit more. More posts, uh, the lieutenant that's in charge of that has been kind of instructed like more content, more content. I think he's kind of finding out, boy, it's tough to come up with content as a government entity. Um, I know, like, I think most people. For entities that have Facebook pages, they're kind of struggle with the content to get the engagement up so that when we do want to push forward messages like that. Message does go forward to quite a few people. Uh, one of the things he had commented on, uh, is the amount of car deer accidents that we're having, the deer that are out there. It is like the number of car deer accidents that we've had while we're, while we're sitting here, um, so.
Tonight?
Yeah, just in, in while I was sitting here, there's been three that have popped up, so. Um, there's a lot of them, uh, a lot of damages being done to cars. For the most part, there's nothing that's real injury. Fortunately, cars are built pretty good that. Even if they hit the windshield, they're usually bound and not going into the car and uh, keeping a good job, keeping, keeping that from going into the cabin compartment. A lot of questions today, so um, usually over the weekend, depending on how the questions come in, Monday is typically a big day for me to take like phone calls on. Things like an Atsigo that come through our office. Uh, today I had five different calls on like a hunting regulation throughout the city, so I'm just kind of sorting through. A number of those, uh, for the most part, those questions are coming in the form of, am I allowed to hunt over here? Can I walk through this? Can I walk through the city property to get to this land sort of thing? Sorting through a lot of those, uh, for the most part, those answers are almost, almost always like, no, technically you can't do that. Um, however, then then it kind of compounds into that hunter who took the time to call in to ask, then notices. But there's five people that just did it, we kind of run into that situation. So there's a number of places in the city that we kind of have to. Shoot squad guards over to that kind of uh, handle that issue, so. Um, beyond that, public safety on Wednesday, I should have a good uh, presentation and I think that's all I can think of for now.
Does anyone have anything? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Tina, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sigh. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.